Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All opposed?
Staying.
Okay. At this time, before I do a pledge of allegiance, one person died as a result of a game the other night and I'mma read the statement. It was a great sadness that McHenry County School Board shares the tragic loss of student Jamar Sally. Jamar was a junior at Parkview High School and played on the Boston Football Team. Jamar was a respectful young man with a bright future. He was a leader on the field and a strong student in the classroom. He will not complain and always did what was the act of him. Jamar will be there and our thoughts and prayers go with the family, the Parkview High School Football Team and coaches, fellow classmates, teachers, and the community that loved this young man. The honor of Sally will be given to him and his family. You have to sort it fine. But the closed session.
Yes. You.
Yes.
Yes. Your honor.
Yes.
Staying.
At this time we have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, Dr. Hackney with data recognition.
Good evening. Tonight, as each month, it gives me great pleasure to honor two of our finest seniors that have been identified as seniors of the month at both of our high schools. I'm gonna start with Parkview High School this evening. Our senior of the month is Diana Commando. Diana is the daughter of Grace Cabada and Claude Friend of South Hill. Her academic, extracurricular, and community achievements make her a deserving... Hey! I meant to do that. Make her a deserve... I'm completely flustered now. Diana's academic, extracurricular, and community achievements make her a deserving recipient of the Senior of the Month Award for Parkview High School. Diana worships at Impact Church of God in South Hill. Diana is actively involved in many school organizations and clubs. She is developing her leadership skills by serving as president of the newly-formed Key Club and the reporter for the Future Business Leaders of America. She is the sports photographer for the yearbook and she is a member of the Spanish Club. Diana is a competitive athlete on the cross-country and the basketball teams at Parkview. She also works part-time at Food Lion. Diana asked Mrs. Wendy Kidd, her ninth-grade English teacher, to sponsor the Key Club. She believes, and I quote, "Our school has a lot of great clubs, but we need more ways to serve and to give back." I wanted my impact on the school to be about helping our community. That is so cool. Mrs. Kidd then described Diana as, and I quote, "Someone who sees a need for change and is a person who sees how she can affect that change. She is a leader and a motivator." That's wonderful. Diana is enrolled in the SVCC Dual Enrollment Program and is one of our many graduates who will graduate with her associate's degree next year in 2015. She plans to then enroll in a four-year university and major in psychology en route to a career as a clinical child psychologist. She said she wants, and I quote, "To help children avoid problems so that they can be healthy and happy because today's kids are the grown-ups of tomorrow." Such wisdom from this beautiful young lady. So Diana, it is my pleasure on behalf of the School Board and Dr. Thornton and the Administration of Parkview High to present you the Senior of the Month for October 2014. Congratulations. I want to congratulate you. Actually, you can have a seat and we'll bring you back. Okay. Diamond Renee Barksdale. We'll do it right this time. Diamond Barksdale is Bluestone High School's October Senior of the Month. She is the daughter of Jimmy and Doris Barksdale of Weyton. Diamond enjoys drawing, poetry, and cleaning. Wow! Her greatest hobby is being a positive influence on other people and trying to help others who are having problems emotionally. She often visits the nursing home to see her grandmother as well as other residents. Mrs. Tanya Jones, Diamond's 11th-grade English teacher at Bluestone, stated, "Diamond is a wonderful young lady. She excels at her studies. All of her teachers speak highly of her. Diamond is always polite. She always has a smile on her face. She absorbs all that life has to offer. She works very hard to be a good student and her grades are proof of that diligence. Diamond is an absolute joy to have in class. She is also a strong team player as an athlete, especially when playing softball. She is a true asset to the Bluestone family because Diamond is a role model for other students." The following quote from David LaChapelle exemplifies Diamond's personality. Quote, "Success to me is being a good person and treating people well." When Diamond's name is mentioned, students and teachers alike smile and comment that she is a wonderful young lady with a bright future ahead of her. Her teachers are confident and believing that she will be a strong community leader as she grows into adulthood because of her values and her education. When asked about a teacher that had been the most influential to her, Diamond immediately stated Mrs. Shirley Madison. Diamond remembers vividly Awards Day at Clarksville Elementary School. I actually remember this too of a little girl in fourth grade lots of years ago. After the program, Diamond recalls Mrs. Madison having awards readily available for the other students that previously did not receive any. Mrs. Madison's goal was for everyone to feel successful. That situation always left a lasting impression with Diamond. And I hope that you've had a chance to tell her that. If not, I'm going to tomorrow. While at Bluestone... You're welcome. While at Bluestone High School, Diamond has been a member of the Beta and One Love, One Life Clubs. Diamond hopes to attend a four-year university that has a graphic design program, and I've heard about some of your artwork and I've heard it's beautiful. So Diamond? It is my pleasure on behalf of the School Board and Dr. Thornton and the Administration of Bluestone High School to present you the October 2014 Student of the Month. Congratulations.
We're gonna take a man, go down and shake the student's hand. Information items.
Okay. First is Alternative Learning Center presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Dr. Thornton, School Board members, student liaisons. I'm Sandra Jones and I'm the former administrator for the Alternative Learning Center. I presented in the template last year's data along with all the additions to the programs for the current Alternative Learning Center program. At this time, I'd like to introduce some former students who would like to speak on their experiences at that program. The first is Jamie Brumel. She's a current Bluestone High School senior. Jamie?
Good evening, Dr. Thornton, Board Chair, Mr. Perrier, and members of the board. I am Jamie Brumel and I am here to talk about my experiences at the Alternative Learning Center. During the 2013-2014 school year, I attended the Alternative Learning Center. Through my experiences there, I was able to keep up with my credits and move towards graduating from high school. I have learned that now I must be accountable for my actions and I must watch the decisions that I make because they have an impact on my life. Because I was given the second chance, I am now on track to graduate this spring. My future is very bright. I am in the process of applying to the University of Tampa and Loyah Marymount University to study music. And I would like to thank Ms. Jones and all the people that are responsible for Alternative Learning Center because they gave me a second chance and I know that this program will help other kids who made poor decisions and help them learn that everyone makes mistakes. But when you give people a second chance, they can learn from their mistakes. So thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. My second person, Mr. Hunter, was unable to come at the last minute, so I would like to take this opportunity to introduce my most current, or I should say, our most recent Alternative Learning Center graduate. She has returned back to Parkview High School as a senior. This is Ms. Chelsea Smith.
Good evening. I am Chelsea Smith, former ALC student. I would like to start off by thanking all of you for having me here tonight. I really feel that my time at ALC has helped me tremendously in building good character and enhancing my academic skills. I never really felt like I was a smart kid because I always had trouble in school. I always had trouble with math. I was good at English, but I always had trouble in math. So when I came here, math seemed to be my best subject because the way Grad Point works, it really makes you think about the way you're doing it, and if you don't understand it, you can go back. I was a part of the community service project. I had to do 50 hours at the Goodwill of Lake Cross. Doing the community service, I say, was a very good character-building exercise and it gave me a lot of experience for the working world and I got to meet a lot of new people and I got to really be out in the adult world and learn new things about how the world really works. When I first came here, I had heard all the stereotypes, I guess, about ALC, how it was a bad place and how everybody fights and, you know, it's not good. But when I came here, I come in the door and I see this shining face, Ms. Livingston, telling me, "Good morning," asking how I am, and I think, you know, this is gonna be a really nice time. I'm really gonna enjoy this because these people really care. So I really, to finish off, to conclude, I would like to say that the dynamic and the combination of student willingness and teacher willingness and everybody caring is the key to success in the ALC program. And thank you guys for having me.
Thank you, Chelsea. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Kira Livingston. She's our teaching assistant at the Alternative Learning Center. Thank you, Ms. Livingston. Unfortunately, Ms. Becky Johnson, who is one of our middle school teachers, she was unable to attend this evening. Are there any questions that we can answer at this time?
How many students do you have at the present time?
At the current time, we have eight.
From all levels?
Six through 12 is all that we handle at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Livingston. Next on the agenda is the equipment grant, Ms. Crutchfield.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Thornton and School Board Liaison, the first. The food service department has had a growing need for new equipment in our school cafeterias. With new meal regulation changes and new programs being initiated every day, space is very tight in our cafeterias. Back in June, I filled out an equipment grant for all eight of our schools and we were asked to fill out the application and ask for two pieces of equipment for each school. The state had a total of $465,000 in grant funding available. I requested the two pieces of equipment for each school, ranging from walk-in coolers and freezers to new mixers, new ovens, refrigerators, and dishwashers. Our total grant application added up to over $494,000, and that's two pieces of equipment at each school. I was notified on October 1st that our grant was accepted and we were awarded $258,700. All eight cafeterias are getting at least one new piece of equipment. Six schools are receiving new walk-in coolers and freezers. We're also getting a bread mixer at Bluestone Middle School, new double ovens at South Hill Elementary, and a reach-in refrigerator at Bluestone High School. This grant that we filled out for Mecklenburg County, we were the only one in Region 8 to receive the award, and we received 56% of the state's entire funding budget. So... We are definitely excited and we'll use this equipment to good use and we'll have the money all spent by July 1st. Does anybody have any questions?
Is this a straight grant or matching grant?
It's a state grant. Everybody applied. In fact, I went to a Department of Education meeting last Tuesday and they were talking about our grant and how well it was done, and none of the other people knew that it hadn't been accepted until that day and they found out. So a lot of people applied for it.
Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue and Ms. Waltney.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Thornton, school liaisons. I know some of you personally, face by face, and I'm getting very nervous already. This is a presentation from the SHAB Committee, which is the School Health Advisory Board Committee. We started working on this approximately a year ago and it's taken us a while to get this off the ground and get this going. We are working in conjunction with the Health Department and Julia Waltney is our representative from there. Our committee members for the project was Dora Garner, Thomas Bullock, Julia, Crystal Crutchfield, Sue Ann Burns, and myself. We are setting an initiative to try to introduce to our fifth-grade level Mecklenburg County Public Schools, "We Can. We can eat more nutritious food. We can move more and exercise more." And it's based on our BMI reports, as you will see in the PowerPoint, for Mecklenburg County schools. We're trying to reduce childhood obesity, which we have seen in the studies linked to adult obesity. We're trying to get it at the childhood level so that when our children grow up and become young adults, they do not have to deal with this kind of problem or they have the tools to handle it, should they face that when they get older. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Julia, and let's go to the PowerPoint. In addition to this, we will do a school informational service once we meet with the principals and bring them the information. We have incentives for the children. We have pedometers for the children. We have prizes and gifts and that kind of thing to offer the children as they make progress in the program.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm going to go over the PowerPoint presentation. This is the childhood obesity, the growing epidemic. Okay. As you see, obesity has become the rapidly increasing epidemic across the United States, affecting not only adults but children and adolescents as well. The thing with obesity, it doesn't discriminate. It affects all races, ethnicities, and all income levels, from the richest of people to the very poorest. Healthcare costs associated with the diseases related to obesity are in the billions of dollars. In a CDC or Centers for Disease Control report, obese children had a 70% chance of being overweight or obese as adults. That's kind of disturbing. Those children are at a higher risk for diabetes, heart disease, strokes, and several types of cancer. In one large study, CDC reported that five-to-10-year-old obese children had a 61% chance of already having risk factors for heart disease, and 26% of those children had two or more risk factors for heart disease. And that is extremely disturbing. So the Body Mass Index, or BMI, is a way of calculating from an individual's weight and height, the fatness of their body, or in other words, that an individual has the appropriate weight for their height. So BMI data was collected from Mecklenburg County Elementary School children in 2012 and 2013, and the following are the results of that data. So in 2012, there were 810 children screened. 31% were found to be overweight or obese. In 2013, there were 905 children screened. 39% were found to be overweight and obese. The BMI results from the children correlate to numbers found in the adults in Mecklenburg County. According to the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and these are the county health rankings, in 2013, 32% of adults in Mecklenburg County were obese. And I'm one of those numbers. In 2014, 33% of the adult population in Mecklenburg County was obese. So you can see how those numbers are kind of correlated. A contributing factor for county residents could be a lack of physical activity leading to the number of obese adults. And I'm, again, fitting into that category, not getting enough exercise. According to the county health rankings in 2013, 29% of the population in Mecklenburg County was physically inactive. All right. So if you're looking at the teeter-totter, you've got healthy eating on one side and physical activity on the other side. As long as they are in balance together, you're gonna have a nice, level teeter-totter. However, once you start having more calories put in and less activity, you can see what begins to happen. So your weight gain occurs when that person consumes more calories through their diet than they are expending through physical activity, and over time, this, of course, is gonna lead to an overweight or obese person. And activity is one way to increase a child's chances of becoming overweight and obese in how many kids are inactive at home or, you know, other places. So, physical activity, are children moving enough? Well, this is taken from the "We Can" initiative, and only 26% of high school girls and 44% of the high school boys get at least one hour of physical activity five days a week. Approximately 33% of your elementary school children have daily physical activity or physical education, and less than 20% have an extracurricular physical activity program listed at school. Now, some of this is what a lot of parents have kind of not understood, but the recommended amount of moderate to vigorous physical activity for children is 60 minutes per day. Moderate to vigorous activities. So Mecklenburg County schools have required twice-a-week minimum amount of time for physical activity. Your children are allowed recess for about 15 minutes per day during which they may be able to get the whole amount of the activity in, or they might not, depending on what's going on during the day. Children spend lots of time at home playing video games and watching TV versus engaging in outside activities such as running, jumping, and riding bikes. Those are the things I did as a child, but when my kids were coming along, they didn't do as much of this. Screen time, we've all heard about screen time. Nearly 30% of zero-to-one-year-olds have a TV in their bedroom. Interesting. On average, eight-to-18-year-olds spend about four and a half hours a day watching TV and movies. On average, eight-to-18-year-olds spend an hour and a half on their phones. Having an inappropriate diet, high in fat and calories, can contribute to a child becoming overweight or obese. And all those good things there, we all love them, but they are horrible for us. So, what are you children eating? Added sugar contributes to about 16% of the total calories in American diets. Pizza and candy consumption have increased by 425% and 180% respectively since 1977. And that's kind of bad. On average, Americans eat less than half of the recommended amount of fruits per day. And I'm one of those. An appropriate diet by itself will not produce the best results. Exercise alone is not the answer. But a combination of diet and exercise is the key to healthy children with the appropriate weight. So Mecklenburg County Health Department and Mecklenburg County Public Schools plan to collaborate on an obesity program to help combat the growing childhood obesity. The Obesity Program Committee, a subcommittee of the Child Health Advisory Board or SHAB, is meant to devise a working program that could be incorporated into the school system. The committee found the "We Can" program, ways to enhance children's activity and nutrition, which could be used not only in the community setting, but could be adjusted to be utilized in the school setting as well. The "We Can" program provides activities and information that will help to improve nutritional choices, increase physical activity, and reduce screen time from children from eight to 13 years of age. The program was designed to reach out to children as well as parents and other caregivers. This is the website, where we can, if you'd like to go to the website and check it out. These are the resources. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
Do you have any information on what the numbers are for the counties that have recreation programs in their counties versus the counties that do not? Because I know a lot of counties that have them have a lot of different programs that they offer for the entire community, and I'm just wondering if there's a correlation there. Because while I'm glad we can do this in the schools, it's not reaching everyone, and I'm just wondering if there's a correlation there to look into.
There possibly may be. I have not checked out those numbers. I know there are programs across the state where they're looking at obesity and how they're partnering with community agencies, not just in the school, but like with the YMCA and the 4-H and different agencies, but I just don't have that information right now.
Are there more questions? Thank you all for that information. Next on the agenda is the traffic light study on LaCrosse. Ms. Tuck?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, and School Board members, School Board Liaisons, and Dr. Thornton. Last week, the administration from LaCrosse Elementary requested that we do a traffic study there at LaCrosse on Canaan Church Road, number 624, and Hall Road, number 620. We contacted Wayne Carter and he said that the School Board would have to request this traffic study. What we would like to do is, from the traffic study, we hope that maybe a flashing light, like they have at Clarksville Elementary or at Parkview High School, to reduce the speed limit during the morning and afternoon bus times. And this was a result of an accident that did happen last week. There was an incident that involved private citizens, but it was right there at the school. Any questions?
So you're asking for the light to be put on Canaan Road?
Well, we're asking for a traffic study. We have to ask as the School Board to the county to do a traffic study, and then they will make the recommendations. And then they will make the recommendations. What we're hoping will be some sort of light, flashing light with a, you know, maybe a reduced speed time during the morning and afternoon. But it comes from the traffic study. So we're asking for a traffic study to be done.
But we're talking about on the Canaan Road?
Canaan and Hall Road. The two roads that go in front of La Crosse. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the agenda of the school board policy.
Good evening, School Board, Vice Chairman, Student Liaisons, Dr. Thornton. Once again, we're here to present the SBA policy, Section E, Student Support or Support Services. And this particular section is here for first read. Topics covered in this section include crisis management, health-related issues, building and grounds, safety procedures, transportation, and food services. This policy will replace Section Four of our current policy. Then we have Section F, which is facilities management. This section includes topics on facility planning and development, playground equipment, energy-efficient construction, accommodations for the disabled, construction planning, dedication of new facilities, school names, and retirement of facilities. This section will replace Section Four, Article Three. Both are for first read for this month and will be voted on in November. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is G, School Activity Fund Audit.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I am here to present the results of the School Activity Fund Audit for fiscal year fourteen. The purpose of our audit was to determine whether the financial statements were fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. We issued an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. In the past, you may have heard of that as an unqualified opinion, or a lot of people like to refer to it as a clean opinion. Basically means that your financial statements were fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, and they didn't require any significant modifications. Also, within the bound report, we issued a yellow book opinion, which is an opinion in accordance with government auditing standards. And that just discusses any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses regarding the internal controls. And we did not report any major findings in that area either. Within the bound document, we did report, or not necessarily report, but provide some internal control recommendations for management of the school board and each of the schools to put into place. In addition to that, we issued a governance letter, which is comprises several communications that we must make each year. Several things that wouldn't be included in there, any difficulties that we encountered in performing the audit. We were pleased to report that there were none. Ms. Garner did a wonderful job coordinating everything. We visited the high schools and the middle schools, and then the elementary schools. Each elementary school was brought to the high school location. So we audited those, at those locations. And so everyone worked very well with us. And we would like to, you know, say that they did a wonderful job, at least coordinating everything and, you know, bringing us in. And we're glad to be here. And if you have any questions specifically about the audit, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
We have a copy.
I'm sorry?
The school board had a copy. We hadn't seen it. I mean, we hadn't seen it.
We released it in August, so...
So...
I believe Mr. Prey here has it.
Is he going to give us a copy?
Are there any more questions?
Ms. Garner, do you have anything to add?
Not really. We did, as you will see when you get the report, receive a letter with findings and recommendations. A lot of these issues, we had already dealt with before Kristen came in through our new manual that we released at the end of February, and also through the school funds online accounting software that we're using now within the schools. So I feel like we're on a really good track to getting pretty much all the bugs worked out on the school activity funds now. And we will report again after meetings we have with principals and bookkeepers in the next couple of weeks.
I just want to say thank you to you for giving everything.
Are there any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is H, RFQ for Pickup Truck for Parkview High School Band, Dr. Thornton.
That's me as well. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Thornton. I am here, this time, to present to you an RFQ 2015-0001. I issued this to request quotations on a newer-used one-ton pickup for the Parkview High School band. Their vehicle has become totally incapable of pulling their trailer. In fact, I think right now they're using a parent's vehicle. We did quite a bit of research. Actually started this in the summer. And because of the size and type of trailer, we do require the one-ton pickup. I got one response. I think it's included in your package. So at this time, I am recommending that we accept this bid and vote to purchase the pickup truck for the Parkview High School band.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, hold on one second.
I have a question. Why are we purchasing a truck for Parkview when it became known that Bluestone needed one, and they did not get the money for theirs? So why are we buying Parkview a truck? It looked like they could raise the funds like Bluestone did to get their money.
I can tell you, there was no request from the boosters or the band program to purchase a pickup truck. We were told that they were willing to buy one, I believe it was either last year or the year before. I'm not sure when they bought it, through their booster money. And the reason we're paying for this is the boosters told me they have no money. We have a huge amount of equipment that we have to transport for our students to be able to play their instruments. And there's no way to get them there except to have a parent take a risk in transporting that, which we should not be doing. So I authorized that we need to pay for that truck. And there's things that we buy for one school. And you'll see in the strategic plan, one of the things, you buy where you have a need. If you want to continue to buy and buy things because we bought something for you, we got to buy something for you, we can do that. But we're trying to spend our money where we need our money. And I'll probably be criticized again because I hate the Bluestone High School band or something. But we've given a lot of money, my first year, thirty thousand dollars, to the Bluestone High School band and the Parkview High School band. This past year, at the end of the year, we spent, I don't know how many thousand dollars down there. Could probably tell you that if she researched it, and bought them a whole lot of extra instruments. We then increased our funding from ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars this year for both of our band programs. We spend more in our band program than we do in some of our elementary schools as a whole for instruction. We fund our bands, we love our bands, I love our band. And we do the best we can with the money we have and when we have needs. And that's the best answer I can give. I'm sorry, we don't have another extra money sitting around to buy them something to be so-called fair. We need a truck to pull our instruments and have our kids be able to play. That's the best answer I can give.
And I agree, because isn't it a liability when a parent is using their vehicle to pull our instruments?
Absolutely. It shouldn't occur. And I got involved once I found out that that was going to be the action they took. And I said, "We just can't do that." Our answer can't be, "Tough luck, boosters. You didn't raise your money."
If... And I mean, I don't have a problem with helping the bands, and I'm all for it. But I've been here a long time. And years ago, it hadn't been that many years ago. If you go back in a minute or a meeting, I think Bluestone requested, or came to us and requested money for a truck. And we turned them down. So, you know, I can see why some of the some of the band boosters from Bluestone are a little perturbed. And I'd just like to say, if we do this, that we make this motion so that when Bluestone gets ready for one, we spend the same amount of money on Bluestone High School. Because eventually, they're going to need one too, I would think.
Certainly.
But I would just like to say that we won't have any questions when it comes up time to buy them one. And there will probably be a new board on which may turn them down. So, you know, who knows what might happen? But, you know, I don't have a problem with the kids getting what they need.
I'd like to, I agree with that statement. And we met with both bands sometime last year during the school year. The band boosters, I should say, parents from both of the bands. And we kind of went through a history of what the boosters pay for and what we pay for traditionally. Because I wanted that research so we could make decisions like this. And one of the things that we said is, if there are items, like instruments, that are these big-cost instruments that a student's not going to be able to go rent, like those big drums and those big brass instruments that cost a lot of money, and trucks to transport the stuff, those should be school expenditures. Absolutely. They shouldn't have to go fundraise. Fundraisings should be for the extras they want to. If they want to buy, and we should buy them uniforms on a cycle. Now, if they want to go out of those cycles, and they want to go to Disneyland and do those others, they should fundraise. But we should support that.
Next item on the agenda is I, Students. Ms. Mills and Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. I would like to congratulate all of the students that were recognized tonight. Last month, I had a meeting with Dr. Thornton, Dr. Hackney, Mr. Coleman, and students from different grade levels in the high school, talking about problems and solutions within the school. Some of the issues that came up was where can we use our cellphones and what are they exactly used for? And we also discussed the qualities of good teachers. As we all know, October is Bullying Prevention Month. Bluestone High School's Anti-Bullying Club sponsored guest speaker Doug Rivas on October the 10th. The whole student body had the opportunity to listen to his passionate words of bullying and how it affects others. And personally seeing all the kids, it definitely really inspired what he was talking about. Also, last month, Charles and I participated in the Ice Bucket Challenge with some of the school board members to help raise money for the Special Olympics. And it was very cold. I'm very excited for the VSBA conference coming up in November. Me and Charles, we did videos for a competition, and you're going to see them later on tonight. And then I know that we recognize this, but the Bluestone High School students and fellow athletes wish to express heartfelt sympathy to Jaman Sally's family. Thank you.
All right, I was just seeing if they were going to play the video first, but I guess we'll do that after. I would like to say thank you for all the support we've gotten in the passing of the student. It's very tragic that we've had to do two school board meetings in a row where I've talked about a student that's passed. But thank you for all the support that we have gotten. And another issue that we did over the month was, we did an interview and selected the student liaisons for next year. So they're going to be attending the VSBA conference in the fall, so they'll be better prepared to act as student liaisons in the coming year. So, thank you. And I guess we'll view her video first and then mine. And this is what we're going to be submitting at the VSBA conference to see if we can place...
That's very well. That's real nice. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Thornton.
Okay. The next item is the strategic plan. And we're actually going to share three short PowerPoints. And we're going to talk about where we've been in Virginia. And this was presented to me recently by Steve Staples, the Superintendent for the Department of Education. And then where we are, and Dr. Hackney will present that. And then where we're going. And we met with a lot of groups last year. Parent groups, we met with all student groups. We met with teacher groups several times. We took a lot of notes. We compiled those notes, and it's taken a while. And it's going to be online this evening. And the board has a draft, and it's going to say "Draft Online." We're only in the draft process. And what we want is a lot of feedback from this document and added comments and to help it along. So first is, from the vast legislative context, the history and context of Virginia Accountability and Accreditation. And the initial state accountability was a minimum competency graduation test based on elementary content. It was in the late seventies and eighties. I don't know if any of you remember this. I actually do remember it. I was a teacher back then. Literacy passport exam was given in the middle school level. And it was intended to identify students with weaknesses before high school. And about a third of the state failed. And seventy percent of our citizens, of Virginia's citizens, know school-aged children. And we were looking for the value of our money being spent in the state. The next initiative was Governor Allen. He sought focus on real improvements and determined to use the existing standards of learning as a vehicle for improvement. These standards already were almost twenty years old, but advisory only. So our SOLs have been around for quite a long time. This led to hobby teaching. There was no statewide continuity. And these SOLs were revised in 1995. And there was a lot of bipartisan support to add accountability to what we were doing and test our students on these standards. So accountability started in 1995. The four goals of the initial accountability effort was to have a minimum standard to create continuity of a curriculum. Assessments to validate student and school performance... Assessments to validate student and school performance. Communication to the public through report cards. And then, consequences based on outcomes. And that's where accreditation had been based in the past on input standards instead of output. The initial implementation, 98.2% of schools failed to meet accreditation standards. I was around with this, and I know many of you remember this. The public did not believe this to be accurate. That 98% of our students couldn't do the work and our schools weren't measuring up. What we found, we needed better curriculum alignment, there was a lot of hobby teaching going on. And the focus was on the test formats, greater emphasis on the test outcomes. And changes to assessment accountability system such as, we started giving high school expedited retakes. And the debate began then, it's about balancing act between these initiatives and punitive measures. How far do we go? The debate continues today. And a recent Commonwealth poll says 70% say we have too much testing. I'm sure you're aware, we talked about it last year, the state has eliminated five tests. So, we have eliminated some of our tests. But 60% of our public still say accountability has improved education in Virginia. And if you look at multiple things, national standards like SATs, the NAEP tests, TIMS, which compares us to other countries. If you take Virginia out, Virginia is doing quite well. So, there's a lot of credibility in that these standards and holding students accountable, and our new standards with more rigor are helping our students. The next section he went over was the impact of more rigorous standards and assessments. The initial SOLs were a minimum. That philosophy has changed and we've added rigor to the test. So, it's not recall anymore, it's problem solving and higher level on these tests. This is kind of the graphic they gave us to kinda show where we were and where we are. And if you look back in 2002, 2003, 648 schools in Virginia were still not accredited. Now, that was seven or eight years into the new SOLs. Mecklenburg County had schools in that 648. If you go down to the next year in 2003, '04, Mecklenburg had some schools in the 400. After that year, 2003, 2004, where it drops to 261 schools, all Mecklenburg schools were accredited. And then, you see the trend go down and down through the years until there were only 19 schools in 2010, 2011. You then see the new history test, followed by the new math test, followed by the new reading, writing, science assessments. And at the same time of the new test with new rigor, the benchmarks were changed and increased. So, the pass rate for the old test was lower than the more rigorous tests. And now, we have a higher benchmark to pass, a passing score. So, if you look at this, you may ask why you only went from 19 to 62 to 111? And then, we had this huge jump to 401? And then, another big jump this year to 571? And that is due to, when you give these tests the way we're accredited, the state will allow you to use a three-year rolling average. So, in those early years of the new test, you had your first set of scores mixed in with your past two years, which were the old assessments. Then, the next year, you had two new sets of scores mixed in with one of the old scores. And then, ultimately, this year, you have new scores. And you see the effect of all the new tests. We now have 571 schools that are not accredited. And what the DOE continues to emphasize and say to us as educators, and is trying to say to the public, is with the new standards and the more rigor, your students are not learning less, they are learning more. And that it takes time to adjust to the new curriculum and the new tests. And, you know, I believe in standards and accountability. Some of it is really hard for the teachers who have to unpack the new standards. And they look pretty much the same. There's more in them. And as we unpack them, and I think Dr. Hackney's probably gonna allude to this in hers. But as you unpack the SOLs, the teachers are looking and they're very similar. And there may have been a few more things added. But what the teachers never got to look at was how are these going to be assessed differently? And now, we do have some released test items that our teachers can look at and help them to guide their instruction. So, really, in your first year and in some test case, your first two years, it's a shot in the dark unpacking the SOLs. And now, though, we have a clear thing. I'm helping with a class in math. And I can look online and see what type of questions that are asked on the SOL with what kind of rigor and make sure that we're teaching that same type of rigor when we're teaching in the classroom. He went over the considerations and opportunities for Accountability 2.0, he called it, the second round of these SOLs. And it says, "How can the next phase drive improvement as well as identification? How can it count for moving towards meeting and exceeding standards? How can we use this to serve as a diagnostic purpose?" When we test students, we hope to use it as a diagnostic tool to move them forward and improve and not punish them. How can it drive equity for schools with a high percentage of children in poverty? What is the appropriate failure point for consequences? What is the appropriate pace of changes to the standards and test? And so, this is from the state superintendent and from DOE. They don't know what the correct pace is. They're not saying that you should be fully accredited in two years. We're not sure what the correct pace is. If you saw the last slide, it was eight to 10 years. I don't believe it's gonna be that amount of time. Now that they're releasing tests and we can continue to unpack the standards and figure them out, I think we'll come around a lot faster. And that is where we've been, and now for where we are, Dr. Hackney. Before we go on, does anyone have a question about where we were?
Members of the board, we recently had the pleasure of having Dr. Kathleen Smith, who is now the owner of a private consulting firm, but has been, recently retired as the Director of the School Improvement Office of the Department of Ed for many, many years. And it was a wonderful, not just eye-opener to what she's seeing around the state and what trends there are in instructional improvement and some of the same challenges that we're all experiencing. But it was also wonderful validation that we're on the right track and that the work we've done last year as a part of our academic review process, extensive training and collaboration with our leadership team and a number of key teacher leaders over the summer, is exactly what she is recommending that we do. So, I'm gonna fly through this PowerPoint because it's not quite as short as Dr. Thornton's. But just to give you an idea of what she shared with us, and I will in particular highlight those areas that we're either already doing and have already put in place or those things that we're going to put in place and working on and what timeframes we have around that. Okay, she described organizations and the process of instructional improvement and change as either loose or tight. And I'm not gonna read to you, but these are how she describes what happens when the structures and the processes in terms of change and instructional improvement are loose in an organization and what will happen as we tighten up those structures. She believes that the key is constant monitoring. We give clear expectations of what we're looking for and we constantly monitor that. And is suggesting that, a number of strategies that I'm gonna share with you that the experts at DOE are saying we need to be doing. She gives this analogy of what a loose, or this visual of what a loose organization looks like and what a tight organization looks like. And basically, it's self-explanatory. The loose organization has all these critical functions, sort of functioning in isolation. And a tight organization has them all working together sort of as a well-willed machine. The emphasis, obviously, on working together and collectively around a shared vision and anticipated outcome of increases in student achievement. She uses this next slide frequently, and it's really confusing even to me, but it has a simple message. She calls it the DNA of a public school system. You have your state and federal mandates feeding in. You have all of your, the next area right there, all of your stakeholders, parents, teachers, income administrators, et cetera, school board, community. And the real significant work done in terms of change management within organizational processes and output. And her argument is that unless those systems are very consistent and very tight and solid, there will be issues in student achievement. So, the tighter and the more consistent we are in the identification and the management and oversight of those processes and structures, the higher student achievement will climb. This is a very important slide, and you've heard me say this a lot of times over the last year. The biggest bang for your buck, I believe, and she has validated, is in alignment of the written curriculum, the taught curriculum, and the tested curriculum. So, she is recommending that, and I'm gonna show you a little bit about her findings, that they're not seeing that across the state. And that sort of validated that we're on the right track by focusing on that. There's gonna be a little bit different focus in academic review this year, and it's sadly, I think, about money. But there are not gonna be onsite reviews other than schools warned at year three. But we will be replicating an academic review system without onsite teams from the Office of School Improvement. They will continue to provide technical assistance, and we've had a number of those trainings already and very, very recently. And they're very good, very effective, and we brought lots of resources back. And actually, Tracy and Christie have already trained all of our instructional leaders, both our principals and building administrators, as well as our instructional support staff, as recently as today. And this just shares with you the research that they're using to support their work. But the basic crux is that we will be monitoring very, very closely a number of specific documents for all of our schools that are accredited with warning to include lesson plans, observation forms, observation schedules, the curriculum, and some of our assessments that our teachers are using. Throughout the academic review process last year, the next few slides are representative of some of their findings consistently across the state. Great teachers were teaching, kids were learning. But they often found evidence that what we were teaching and what we were testing were not aligned to the curriculum and specifically, the new standards. And that's why I shared with you all that we really needed, the most urgent priority last year and accomplished over the summer was the development of a new curriculum that specifically is written to the new standards. Because they are different and they're deeper and they're more rigorous and they require a greater level of student understanding and application. Another finding that they found was that we were, school divisions across the state were testing kids all of the time with summative assessments. The big end-of-course tests or mid-terms or final projects, they were doing a lot of that. There wasn't a lot of what we call formative assessment, or those little snapshots of how kids are doing. Monitoring kids regularly for learning as they go through and making decisions based on their progress as to how to change teaching, how to support that child and identify their strengths and weaknesses to make sure that they master the material. She also found, or her people found in all of their academic reviews, that there was considerable evidence that our principals and building administrators were spending time in classrooms. They were observing instruction. They were also providing good evaluations on a regular basis to, through the formal observation process to teachers. What they found consistently statewide was that there was very, very limited evidence that as a result of those meetings and observations, our principals had the opportunity to sit down and really have discussions with their teachers and provide them good, strong, solid, reflective feedback in order to help them ultimately improve their craft and change their practice. The other thing they found was that there was lots of professional development and good professional development throughout the state. But they found that there was real weakness or limitations in what happened as a result of those staff development sessions. That, you know, there weren't structures, processes, systems in place to ensure, first of all, that the people that were receiving the staff development went back and did something with it. And then, even the next step, so, if they did implement it, well, did it work? And ways to evaluate its effectiveness. So, another important thing for us to think about in terms of our professional development. And the last of their big findings over the course of the academic review process over the state were that lesson plans, they had evidence that lesson plans were reviewed by the principal. But when the team reviewed the lesson plans, again, there was a significant issue with the alignment to the new standards, that they were not finding that. And we found that in our own academic review. Great lesson plans, great activities, great motivating, engaging experiences for our kids. But the alignment to the new standards and the specific content was lacking. So, she described the million-dollar question as, "How do we impact the planning and delivery of instructions so that what the teachers teach and what the students learn is aligned to the new standards?" And what she told us repeatedly, and we have heard for several years now, is that the biggest bang for your buck is feedback. Creating those critical conversations and those discussions with teachers that will ultimately improve their practice and directly correlate to increases in student achievement. The other key recommendation that she has made in that we are focusing this year, our academic review efforts, and it sounds sort of, you know, like this would be an automatic, but it hasn't been, and it isn't across the state, was the recommendation that we align our school improvement practices to our evaluation system. And, you know, that's a big, you know, duh. But you'd be surprised how many different evaluation tools and observation tools are out there that are obviously follow the state's performance standards, but they're not necessarily aligned to our improvement efforts. So, we've worked very hard this summer and are continuing to work with Laura in terms of making sure the tools that we use, the rubrics that we use, and all of our supports, the dots are all connected and they're all logically supporting each other. This particular slide gives the first five teaching performance standards that the state requires us to look at in evaluating teacher effectiveness. The first four, I mean, they're all self-explanatory, but the first four are sort of the biggest bang for our buck in terms of instructional leadership. Sadly, you know, we don't really feel like we have much control over number five. And that's been an ongoing topic, I think, for this board and the Board of Supervisors. But clearly, the research shows that, you know, these all impact instruction, including the learning environment in which our children learn and our teachers teach. Again, is your system prepared? Same slide, but we're very much doing all those things that I just shared with you. And what we hadn't put in place, we have put in place, so. She spent a lot of time talking to us about change and organizational change, taking time and making sure that you understand, we all understand, the importance of a slow systemic process that will be sustainable over time. Again, requires new processes, new learning, new policies, and buy-in by all, including you all. And so, we're working on that as well. And so we're working on, on that as well. This is just some, they're, they're using a lot of Hattie's work, and he's done lots of studies on student achievement, and you can see his work suggests that the highest gains come from feedback to the teacher, principal to the teacher, administrator to the teacher, and teacher to the student. So we're going to be working on that as well and have structures in place to do that. Same thing. I think this is self-explanatory as well. The reason we provide instructional supervision is to enhance our teachers' skills so that ultimately what they do correlates to increases in student achievement. Teacher evaluation is not an end in itself, but a means to an end, and that means is teacher improvement. So we want to make sure that it's not just a one-time event, but a process by which we, we have conversations all year long to support ultimately an evaluation, but improvement in their practice all the way through, that will directly correlate to student gains. Okay, there's something missing from, I was going to say, I'm not sure I can wing that one. This is a great slide, I think, related to what is absolutely critical in making permanent sustainable changes. And it starts with clear expectations of what skills exactly we need to, to see. Coupled with an emphasis on effectively and frequently monitoring those skills, giving, giving good feedback, and that will result in a change in practice. And the, the reverse of that is training, clear expectations of the skills needed without frequent monitoring and emphasis on monitoring and ongoing critical conversations and reflective feedback will result in the same practices and the same results. So we definitely want the equation above. She spent a lot of time talking about transparency and building political will, everything being evidence-based, and we're really proud of that. That's our big theme this, this year. We were, we didn't need her to tell us that. We are, we're using data to drive every decision that we make. And clearly, the, the research is clear that if you used appropriately, it, it will inform teacher practice and that will ultimately translate to student, student growth and Real proud of this one. Our major focus last year was on the implementation of our teach document, which we've shared with you, a rubric that outlines all of the 21st century skills that we're, we're focusing on at four various levels of proficiency. And it looks at exactly at each of those four levels what the teacher should be doing, and it looks, also looks at, more importantly, what the student should be doing. And her findings and advice is that we should spend a lot more time looking at evidence of what our kids are doing and less explaining what the teachers are doing. Again, I'm not going to read this to you, but these are examples of questions that we want to be asking our teachers. We don't want to just, you know, give them informal feedback, your lesson plans look good, your bulletin boards look great, and I'm not suggesting that's what we do, but, you know, we've seen, we've used lesson plans as recently as a few weeks ago, you know, that, you know, were complimentary but didn't really tell the teacher anything to improve the quality of his or her instruction. So we want to really focus on those types of questions. Here she talks about the biggest barriers being the not using the right words to influence change with our teachers, not evaluating and/or monitoring enough, and not collecting the right evidence and data with which to make good decisions and have those good critical conversations. And these are some examples that I thought were, were exceptional to get us thinking. For example, what happens if I tell you that you work hard? Would it cause you to provide feedback to students more often? Not necessarily, but you'll see oftentimes in a, in a feedback from a lesson plan, I see you're working very, very hard, but that doesn't tell us much. What if you only provide me with feedback three times during the year? Do you think I might begin using high-yield teaching strategies without having a conversation about why those are important and why that research, what that research means? What if you check my lesson plans as being in on time each week? You see that a lot. Thank you for getting them on time, they look good. So really rethinking sort of the, the quality and the integrity of, of feedback that we give that helps, helps us support those teachers in not just reinforcing that they're on the right track, but that they are, their, their lessons do involve and include the key things the research says, or elements the research says will make a difference in student learning. Most importantly, again, she just reinforces that your systems must be in place, they must be solid and working order for change to happen. Same, oh, same slide and, and graphic, how prepared is your system to change evaluation to professional learning and growth? Again, we're right in the middle of that and, and almost ready to, to roll out a blended system that, that really merges and meshes our school improvement efforts, our instructional improvement efforts with our observation and evaluation system, where they work hand in hand. The next section, she talked about the role of executive leadership in the, in the, the school systems across the state and, and the school board and their role in this process. Obviously, you know, it's important that superintendent takes the lead in making sure that the school board understands these needed changes and this, this way to rethink how our principals support and supervise and provide instructional leadership to our teachers. She acknowledges that not everyone is willing and able player, and you'll always see that in significant organizational change, not everybody's going to be on board. And she gave an example, if we know that we can't change a child's economic background, but we can teach that child, then we also know that we can't change school boards, but we can educate them and hold them accountable. So she provides in the next slide some suggestions for school divisions and, and superintendents to work together around what she calls the messy, messy work of school improvement. She talks about how complex it is, and she suggests that the role of the school board is to ensure that the system has policies in place to ensure new inputs and processes that result in increased student outcomes, that they don't develop those inputs, but they ensure that the policies are in place to do that. She said, you know, she reinforced that statewide, she has seen that that's been a problem, so we want to really work on making sure that we keep you informed and understand what we're doing and answer all your questions so that we're all on the same page. Can you go back to the last one? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. She talked about the moral imperative, that, that real school improvement will take place when all of us want what's best for the students, when we're all willing to make the changes that we have to make to make improvement happen, no matter how difficult it is, what the cost, and no matter what the sacrifice for the sake of the children. And that's one of the reasons we've worked so hard on improving culture in our organization, because we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. We have some work to do and we know that, and we want to make sure that everybody is thinking that way. The urgency is there, the commitment is there, the heart is there for the work. Again, just some examples of why it's important for transparency. You can't argue with data. Your goals should be realistic and easily attained. She reinforced again that so many systems in, in the state of Virginia have tried to, you know, to make this happen too quickly, that it has to be a, a process over time. She also emphasized, like Dr. Thornton, that, you know, five to six years was something that she said to us, but obviously clear progress along the way. Okay, next one. This is self-explanatory. Go ahead, Laura. Encouraged us to look at our processes, what they look like now, what needs to be changed, what will it look like? And we do that every single week. We meet routinely. She, she suggested, and I think the principals almost fell out of the chair, chairs, but she suggested that it would not be, her recommendation would be three hours a week of everybody at the table working on analyzing data and making instructional decisions. And we're probably about there, isn't that right, principals? We're, we're doing a lot of that work, a lot of meeting, a lot of time to collaborate, and I, I think we're seeing the results. And she emphasized prioritizing. And last couple of slides, she talked a lot about mediocrity and how across the state she has seen, in particular in some struggling systems, and in particular in rural systems, often a sort of status quo MO, a, you know, it just, it's never going to get better, so we're just going to keep doing what we're doing and, you know, hope for the best and hope for these things to go away, whatever. And, and we fight some of that. We are fighting some of that in this organization, and we're, again, that's why it's so important to, to, to couple this work with supporting a culture that, 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 that helps slowly hold the hands of our teachers and our support staff to move to some areas that are not as comfortable and that are different from what they've always done and always known. But the, the real enemy and the, the alternative is a status quo or mediocrity within the culture of the organization. So she really suggested that we stay on top of that, that the leadership of the organization will either change that or not, and that we need to acknowledge that and set goals to support that and ensure that we make that change happen for our kids. And again, she just says with the right help, your system can be changed, and emphasizes the focus on the processes and structures and their direct correlation with student achievement. And finally, I just wanted to share with you, the last, the last slide, these are just some examples of all the things we have been doing, have worked on over the course of the last year, year and a half. Again, what, what was most refreshing is she validated so much of what we're already doing or have already put in place this year. We have formal processes for academic review. Again, those are, those are designed and administered at the local level now, because they're not, they don't have the money to send people to us for all of our schools. So we have clearly put a focus on the alignment of the curriculum and are creating ongoing, regular, and frequent opportunities for reflective feedback, both with teachers as well as our, our instructional leaders. We got a framework for our language arts and mathematics curricula accomplished thanks to some wonderful coordinators and directors and in particular, teachers. This summer, we're still tweaking that and using staff development to, to make sure it's, it's where it needs to be. We have targeted science and social studies for this summer. We've reorganized our department to make sure that the staff are, that are able to focus and, and provide support at the building level. We have evaluated every student in reading and math using our new tool, but thank you so much for approving iReady, and that data is going to be extremely helpful as we move forward, not just on to get kids performing better on SOL tests, but really, really find and identify their weaknesses and their gaps in instruction and remediate to fill those, those issues. We are weekly monitoring data as an organization. It's going on routinely at the schools, but as an organization, we are every single week monitoring data and, and the instructional supervision that's taking place at the building level. We are requiring evidence. We don't talk about what we think or what we guess or we speculate. We require the data to support those discussions. And all, and, and our decisions that we make are only made with data that, that supports them. We are putting in place, or have already in place, formal structures for remediating our students that are struggling. All of our PD is being aligned with our organizational goals, and we are following through to make sure it's being monitored, implemented at the building level, and evaluating its effectiveness. We're clearly in the process of tightening up our expectations, our structures and processes. So I feel like where we are is we're in a good place. We are, and she told us that. And we are consistent, what we're doing and have been doing is consistent with what she has suggested we do as best practices and what she's seen in terms of challenges across the state. So I, I feel really good about where we are. And I guess now it's Dr. Thornton's turn to tell us where we're going.
Okay, this PowerPoint is just a summary of what, like I said before, what's in this document, and so I'm going to briefly go over it, and hopefully you read this over the next month or so to get feedback to it. We're going to need to have a retreat or a planning session to talk about it more in length, and then this document, we're planning on meetings again with parent advisory groups, students as well, and to get some feedback on this document. The overall goals, and these are broad goals that we heard, was one, increase student achievement. And we'll talk about that and narrow that down a little something for you. Improve recruiting and retention of all Mecklenburg County Public School personnel. We all know that the closest link in research to student achievement is the teacher in the classroom. And increase parental and community involvement. So those are the broad goals. As we move on, our mission is to foster a culture of excellence. We're proud of students and educators who become craftsmen of beautiful, quality work. Again, not settling for the status quo and doing multiple drafts, and that's why we're doing multiple drafts of our strategic plan, so that we have a quality product at the end of that. And then we focus down on, on more strategic goals. And we, we look for themes. And the first one is focus on the student to ensure they excel academically and are prepared for life beyond the classroom. And you've heard us talk about 21st century skills over the past few years. I recently went to a presentation in Newport News where they focused their curriculum on the SOLs and they tie in the 21st century learning skills. And, and we're doing that as well. They're a little head with their documents and stuff on that, but they have a large staff. Recruit, select, induct, develop, support, promote, compensate, and retain effective educates. We cannot listen anymore to the rhetoric that's out there, some people who don't want to see their taxes increase or, or don't have children in the school anymore, that these teachers don't, they don't need any more money, they're fine, they'll teach for nothing, they'll teach for half their salary. It's just not true. And there are some more experienced teachers at the top of our scale, and they make $50,000 a year, and they're very comfortable, they've been here a long time, and they are probably very comfortable with that. But it's not across the board, and you have to plan for the future. Engage parents and community in a meaningful way to support student learning. We have to do a better job in talking to our parents and community and, and relaying that information. You saw Kathleen Smith said, we need experts in this, in this plan to, to move forward. But we have to do a better job relaying that to the community, why we're doing what we're doing. And then build the infrastructure to enable and support student learning in division goals. And infrastructure, if you read this document, it just doesn't mean the school building. It does mean the school building and the environment, but there's other things in there. So when you get to that section, look carefully at those things. And ensure that all adults are focused on achieving results for children and accountability. So I'm going to go over in the next few slides the strategic goals, and you're going to see one through four, and you're probably going to ask, where's five? Because there's five on this slide. Number five on this slide is ensure that all these things, there's accountability attached to each. So we didn't have a separate strategic plan for accountability. There's got to be accountability measures for each one of these four strategic areas, and you'll see in the document where they're built in. And you'll see in the document where they're built in. We've identified some of those items in the document, but others you'll see just blank items because we want to hear back from the community, back from our teachers and stakeholders, what are the measures that we need to be using? So, strategic goal one. Again, I'm not going to read that all to you. That's in the document. The large document's going to be put online if it already hasn't been. But we broke down some objectives under that. First, you have to have high expectations and deeper learning opportunities. We've talked about rigor, whether you call it deeper learning, rigor, whatever you want to call it, that is what's happening. We have to increase the rigor and prepare our students for the 21st century. And you have to have high expectations. We have to have people in this organization that believe in our students and that believe they can do it in spite of that thing you saw in Dr. Atkin's with the DNA. There's 134 different school divisions out there with different DNA. And we are high poverty and we do have some issues, but we have to address those within our strategic plan and we can't let them be the excuse. The next objective is individual student learning. A lot of times when you see that, you think about special ed children, individual education plan. We have so much data now based on the student and the iReady things we've done. We ought to be able to create individual student learning plans for our students and monitor that and get them where they're going. We need to start tracking them. Where do they want to be once they get out of school? And those conversations have to start in the middle school level and we need to track those. And we need to modify those conversations as our students grow and change. Objective three, aligning support in high needs areas. I kind of addressed that earlier with the truck. We need to move our money, move our support to where we have the highest needs. If we wait to spend the money until we have enough to give everyone, then we're really missing the boat a lot of times. Or we're not putting in enough funding. If we just give everyone the same and some school may not need as much as the other, we're missing the boat. So, we have to make strong decisions based on data and put that money where we need it. Strong student supports and services. And you'll see some of the guidance issues in there. We've addressed guidance. And we have to do a better job in guidance. Guidance has become almost this test-taking machine. And our students need to be able to go to guidance and really plan their future and talk about their data. And a lot of times, the door is closed because we've got to do so much testing and this accountability. We can't use that as an excuse. We've got to figure out how to make that happen. And strong foundations. And that starts at the beginning. And you'll see in this document where it talks about birth to three years old. We have to develop partnerships from birth to three years old to help some of these families that are in poverty and help educate them because that is where a major gap occurs before they ever hit school. We have children coming to us that some of them don't have a 10-word vocabulary. So, you're starting here. And then we have others who come to us at a reading. I mean, how do you address those gaps? And so, do we just wait? Or do we, as a community, try to come together with some different organizations and strategize how to help our whole community? Goal two, effective educators. I can't say enough about this and I'm going to say more about it in a little bit. But we need strong leadership at each school. We need high-quality instruction. If you looked at the slide from Kathleen Smith, after feedback was high-quality instruction. And then provide training and support for our teachers. You often hear some criticism about, "Here we go spending money again on professional development training." All of these teachers need training. These are new standards. These are new 21st century goals. We don't even know what the jobs we're training our kids are out there. It takes constant training, constant conversations, like Dr. Atkin said. Three hours a week that we have to talk about data and talk about where we're going. Engaging our parents and community. We need to engage parents and volunteers and create and embrace this. We have to do, we have so much involvement at our schools. Somehow, we need to capture that. And then we also have to look at research and how can we use these volunteers best within our schools? And so, we'll be looking at that. How can we increase the Mecklenburg business partnership? What else can we do within that organization and help our schools? And the infrastructure, enabling student learning. Objective one, focus on operational efficiency and professionalism. We're looking at that. Where can we save every dime efficiently and put that towards instruction? And right now, we're doing a very good job at the percentage of dollars that is spent in instruction in this school division. Could we do better? Absolutely, yes. Provide an instructional setting where all students are encouraged to learn. And you can read more in the document. We have to put our students in a position where they can achieve and transfer data into actionable knowledge. We have to use data to make our decisions. We can't go by "I feel, I think" anymore. And we have to come together. But it is our job to communicate why we're making these decisions and do a much better job of that. And so, hopefully, we will be able to get that. Next, how are we going to measure this progress? And these are just some examples that we need to think about and have a discussion about. Of course, we're going to have to measure SOLs. Should we be measuring SATs? I think yes. And I have heard that from many people in our data collection. College and career-ready tests that we're currently giving. Is that something we should be looking at year to year and tracking the progress? Student attendance, student discipline, et cetera. Do we need to track some of that? And the common indicators, teacher's experience and training, teacher attendance, resource allocation, student demographics. Those things do affect outcomes. So, we have to look at how we can affect those. Just some highlights in the different areas. Literacy, arts integration and STEM. We've heard a lot of that. We want the whole student. We have, I'll bring up band again. We've had, we have two wonderful bands. We have theaters throughout this community. We have students who I talked to at Parkview who said they have to pay to go to La Crosse to perform their drama. And that was another thing that we found out thanks to meeting with the students. They shouldn't be having to fundraise to pay La Crosse. So, we're going to pay that bill. But those are great venues in our community that we should be using and affording our students those opportunities. I don't want to get bogged down by the new SOL so that we go back to, everything we do is about that one standard because we're hurting our children and the whole development of the whole child and 21st century skills and music and athletics and everything that's out there for them. We have to be careful when we balance this. And I know there's a big push. We have to get accredited. We have to get accredited. And I hope we don't lose the total focus on our total child and what makes each child special. One of our big things, and I think we've talked about this before, we want every child to be able to read proficiently. And what that means is on grade level by third grade and remain that way through the schools. We've given our iReady testing. We're not close. And there's many school systems that will tell you, "We're not close." They all strive for this. We all know this. I think everyone on this board has heard that. If you're not reading by third grade, you're pretty much dead in the water. You're going to have major problems. You probably won't graduate. So, how can that not become a slogan and become reality? Well, it's using data and then coming up with these individual plans to help every child. Part of that is what we've already done in the elementaries, K through two. Taking the parameters off and saying, "If you need to teach nothing but reading and math, then teach nothing to reading and math to that group of children." If that's what they need to get caught up. We have to do things differently. Again, not that cookie cutter. I'll go back to the band truck. Not every student needs a band truck. Some need it. So, what we've got to do with the K through two is whoever needs intensive reading, well, we've got to give them intensive reading and get them caught up. The students have an integrated arts and a STEM curriculum. We've heard a lot about the STEM curriculum. We've heard the future is in technology and STEM. And so, we've started with two of our elementaries with kids playing two instruments. The feedback has been tremendous. The research is there and how it helps them instructionally, academically, and staying focused and disciplined. And I'm going into the elementary schools. I was in Chase City today and walked around at lunch and asked the kids, "What do you think about the violins being?" We love them, Dr. Thornton. And this was a fifth grade group today that's being exposed to them for the first time. And these are, some of them are big burly football players who play youth league football. But they want to play that violin and they want to show us. It's exposing our kids. We're doing ST Math, which is a research-based mind curriculum in Chase City. We funded it in Chase City. It was a high-need area. It hasn't been funded in the rest of the schools yet. Again, allocating resources we're needing and we're looking at that data. We want to expand and put a STEM focus, K through two. And then in grades three through five, expand and actually expose our kids to hand-on STEM activities that are relevant. The robotics program is excellent at the high school. That needs to be expanded through STEM at the middle school and into both high schools, again, to give our students exposure. Next, building this teacher pipeline. It says, "We're going to evaluate current recruiting process and the compensation incentives currently offered to attract potential applicants." And talking about initiatives for hard to staff in science and math. These are all things that I've heard from either board members or in the community. Do we need to pay math teachers more? Do we need to pay science teachers more? Do we need to give them incentives? All that creates controversy because all teachers work hard. But those are things that came up. So, we need to investigate those avenues. I will tell you, as far as our teacher pipeline, we did give that pay increase a few years ago when we were like last in the region. Because we gave one pay increase, and now it's been two or this is the third year, because we shot money in one time, didn't fix the problem. And I think at one of the supervisor's meeting, I heard that. Well, they had money one time, or it may have been the education committee. Well, we gave you money one time. Well, when you're last, one time does not fix it. And I presented several months ago about a five-year plan and we'll talk about that more throughout the strategic plan. Over the next five years, we have to address it every year if we're to catch up. And I've given this example before and I'm going to say it again. And hopefully, you can get the numbers correct. A 10-year veteran of Mecklenburg County makes $37,595. So, that's someone around 32, if they came fresh out of college, might have some kids. They make $37,595. Now, Greensville, Charlotte County, Halifax County, Buckingham County, Nottaway County, Amelia County, Avon Maddox County, Prince Edward County, all schools in South Side, Virginia, all who have similar demographics to us. All of those schools I just mentioned, the starting teacher pay is $37,000, all the way up to $40,000, the starting teacher pay. And we're paying the same amount or less to a 10-year veteran who's working hard. I don't want to hear again, and I know I am going to hear it and it's going to frustrate me, but I don't want to hear again that they just do it because they love children. Absolutely, that's why they chose the profession. But they also have families to feed. They also have careers. It isn't, it's just a dumb statement is all I can say. If you want the best teachers to come to this area and live in this area, you have to pay them. You have to invite them in and welcome them and keep them here. I mean, it's just common sense. And then we talked about transparency. And the state says to be transparent. And when I say these things, I'll be accused of being a monster or I'm against teachers. I'm not against teachers. I want the best teachers for our schools. If they're not the best and the data shows that, we want to help them. We want to put them on an improvement plan. We want to help them over time. If we can't help them, we want to say goodbye. And we owe it to our children. That's not a bad thing. That's how corporate America works. I don't understand why we sacrifice our children for adults. And it's wrong. I'll give you some examples. Math is a shortage everywhere. And even in some of the higher-paying areas, math is a shortage. But compound that with the starting pay we do, it even makes it worse. And these are some results. And I would just say, teacher A, B and C. There's somewhere over the last three years. I'm not identifying the schools. You're not going to be able to find the SOL score because our SOL scores are reported by an area. So, you'll never be able to find out who these are. But these are facts. Teacher A, a third-grade math teacher with a 20% pass rate on a plan of improvement for years and removed. Fifth-grade math, 35%. They left our system after being placed on a plan. Now, we know they left because they were placed on a plan. They might have told someone or their neighbor that, "We're bad guys. We made them do too much work and we're not right for kids." Well, 35% in not doing what's right for kids is why they're no longer here. You can't have it both ways. A teacher in the era of special education, 0% pass rate in math, 10% in reading, left on her own. Some of the other areas, I'm going to say something good now. A second-year teacher, I won't say the grade, teaching math, 68% pass rate, the second-highest in our division. And the sad story is, in two more years, when she has or he has tenure, they're probably going to leave, probably to one of these other counties for $6,000 more. And those are the facts. Those are the facts coming through personnel. So, you can believe the rhetoric you hear or you can believe the facts. And what we have is the facts. Another teacher in grade five in the division somewhere in writing, 78%, highest in the division. Also, a history person with 100% pass rate. Very happy about them, right? They're no longer with our division. Left on their own and cited more opportunities for her children elsewhere. That's the facts. Mathematics teacher in secondary level, 24% pass rate, non-renewed. We do evaluate. We do try to help. But at the end of the day, we have to say goodbye. And what do we have to do after we say goodbye? I'm not going to go. There's a lot more on my list. What do we have to do after we say goodbye? Put a thing out there and show them our salary scale and show them you're going to be one of the lowest-paid teachers in the state of Virginia. Please come to us and teach. And what do we got? We get teachers who have interviewed elsewhere, couldn't find a job anywhere else. And that's who's teaching your children. And some of them work out great. I don't want to scare you. Some of them are great. I just told you. The sad story is though, four years from now when they have tenure, goodbye. And we start over. So, you have to ask yourself, "Am I the bad guy to point this out? Or are you going to stand up in this community for your children and fund a proper education?" I've said it a million times. And the Board of Supervisors or anyone else can spin it any way you want. We are funded 133rd in the state of Virginia out of 134. How many times do I have to say that before someone goes to the Board of Supervisor's meeting and say, "Please fund public education," besides Jim Thornton? Maybe that's why they think I'm a moron or an idiot and crazy because I'm the only one there. Because I'm the only one there. I must be stupid. And you know what? My daughter's graduating. And she's gone to governor's school and she's got a good education with some of our good teachers here. She's also had, hit some gaps here. But is that good enough? And you know what? I'm still going to say this when she walks across that stage. Are you going to say that, whether you have her child or not? At some point, we have to wake up and look at data. That's what we're doing. We're looking at data. Next slide, Ron. And building capacity to assess and analyze facilities. We've been working collaboratively with the Education Committee. You've heard the vote, you've seen the vote. I'm not going to preach a ton on this. I just want to say that Mr. Barber on the Board of Supervisors made a very good, did a very good job of presenting the facts to the rest of the board and the public who was at that meeting about what this study does. And it was very clear that what this study does is takes this school board out of the equation. It takes the Board of Supervisors out of the equation. And it brings a third-party architect into the equation that can go out and meet to community stakeholders throughout this community, whether they're parents, whether they're business people, whether they're students, and will hear their voice. And they will write down everything they want in a new school, including whether they want two or one. Because five years ago, I heard that it was a done deal. But then I heard from people throughout the years, we didn't really have a say. Well, now we have a chance to have a say. Whether it's one or two, we can hear from all these people. The architect will bring what they heard back and say to the two boards, this is what I heard from your community. And they'll still price it both ways. Here's your consolidated with the programs that this community wants. Here's your two high schools with the programs they want. What are you willing to pay for? That is all we've asked for them to fund, $200,000, to hear the community's voice. And the answer is no. And some of the answer is no because we don't know until the next election whether this board's going to be here. I'm going to state it again. This school board or the next one is not going to go to school in those schools. And does not go into school in the current conditions. The Board of Supervisors or the next Board of Supervisor is not for them. It's for our children. We all know we need new schools. Whether they're renovated, whether they're one, whether they're two, let's find out the answer. Let's find out how much they cost and do it. I don't care if I'm here or not when that decision's made. Someone needs to do it for our kids. And we're just going to keep waiting. 20 years ago, that committee of 80 people in this community said, hire an architect. And we've asked three times now with a resounding no. You need to talk to the supervisors and ask them. And if I'm the bad guy, I'm sorry. Someone go ask Dan Tanner. Someone ask Dan Tanner, who has said no to every vote for our budget since I've been here. For every vote for education, it is no. The people in La Crosse, you might want to go knock on his door and ask him, is the answer no for education for our Mecklenburg students because your children went to Brunswick Academy? Is the answer no because your wife works at Brunswick Academy? You support Mecklenburg County. You are supervisor for this county. When are you going to vote yes for our children? And I know, again, I'm the bad guy for saying it. The facts are the facts. Go look up the votes. You go to your elected officials who can make a difference and you ask them the question. We're going to do the best we can with what we have. And let me tell you, I am so proud of our teachers, of our team, that work very hard every single day to make these kids achieve. I'm asking you to go work hard and stand up for your children. And the last thing, and then I'm done preaching for the evening, is the immediate focus areas, as you look through this report. We are going to look at school accreditation. We are going to look at SAT scores. We are going to look at a rigorous college preparatory and career readiness program. We are going to look at qualified and quality teachers. We are going to look at reading. We are going to look at facilities. And we are going to look at parent engagement. Please read this report. Give us feedback. Tell us where we're missing things and that you want for your children. But as you read this report and tell us what you want instructionally for your children, please don't forget, we need quality teachers, which cost money. We need quality buildings, which cost money. Someone's got to make the decision. And I will end on one thing. I've said it a million times. Five cents will build a new high school right now. With the existing $2 million they put with us, five cents will cost an average resident person $80 for the entire year. $80 to fund a new school today, not 10 years when we have 30% down. And I guess that's really being crazy because we can't even get $200,000 when we have $12 million sitting in our county coffers. Any questions on the plan?
I actually have questions and a comment. If I can remember where they were through here. But you were talking about the students in the elementary level, reading on the, getting them and helping them to read on the third-grade level. And K through 2, they can change things around or whatever. But we know that we have students. And I don't know what the results were, but I'm assuming from the I-ready, we know that there are some students that are on a higher level or in higher grades that are still not reading on grade level. What are we going to be doing to help those students? Question one. You want me to do all of them at one time?
Answer it.
Okay.
Briefly, we are researching at the secondary level, reading programs that we might be able to implement in the middle school and at the high school for a target audience.
Okay, so we are looking at things we can do.
Yes.
Okay, when you were talking about the teachers and the salaries and the pay scales and things like that, it triggered that the Board of Supervisors actually funded for a company to come in and look at all the county employees and to get their pay level up to what it was within the region. Is that something that we should be looking at to have a study done and a company come in to do the same thing for us? To be able to bring our teachers up to that level? And I think that it is something that we need to do to find out exactly where we are. And again, that goes back to what you said earlier, that we can't argue with the data. And then a comment. I want to thank Mr. Barber, Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Lundt, and Mr. Spain for supporting and doing what was right or trying to do what was right for the students of this county. I am disappointed in the vote. And a comment was made that there might not be a new school in one of the supervisors' lifetime. Well, the only thing that's holding that back is the Board of Supervisors actually helping us to fund that. And I encourage everyone in the La Crosse district to contact Mr. Tanner and talk to him about his votes because the record is correct. And motivation, I don't know, and I won't answer for that. But I will say that he has voted against the budget and other things, and he did vote against this. And I think that, I'll be glad to give you all three of the phone numbers and the addresses to where you can contact him if you want to get in touch with me. Because I think that, I hope that he is my counterpart and I hope that my constituents will go to him and express that, what they want. And I'd like to expand on that a little bit. If any of the constituents that have talked to school board members in the past, which I've had many that were not in, all in my district, because I listen to anybody and everybody. And there are a lot of people out there that want this school. I encourage you to contact your Board of Supervisor representative to, not just singling out one. But for me, I can say, please contact my counterpart.
Can I say something? I've asked, one of my questions about the new school, and I agree, we need facilities really bad. I'd like to see the numbers. One thing we have done is nobody has shown the meat. How, I'd like to see it, a report or something given to the school board. Next week, you're the head of the Educational Committee. Dr. Thornton has already said, from what I'm getting from the Board of Supervisors, for every one cent that we raise taxes, we get $300,000. Okay? A nickel will bring us 1.5 million. What is the debt service on $130 million with nothing down? I'd like to know that number. I'd like to know how you would divide 3.5 million dollars into a debt service for $130 million. When our debt service on 500, on a half a mil, on 500, on 5 million dollars, I'm sorry, whatever the elementary school was, I don't have that exact data, was over a million dollars a year was our debt service on that. Our debt service right now is $895,000 a year on the South Hill Elementary School, which we will continue to pay for another 20 years. Okay? I just want the numbers. Show the public the numbers, and then we have something to go on. And then I'd like the Board of Supervisors to show us why they say it's 27 cents. And let's analyze this in public so the public can see it now.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Part of what this report would do is the architect would look at all-
I don't need a report.
Wait a minute.
All I need is you to give me the numbers. Everybody here can multiply.
She'll have more chance than her to say what she's got to say.
Those are the same questions that the Education Committee has asked, that the Board of Supervisors have asked. We have taken every report with every set of numbers that's there to them. It is our job to bring to them, this is what we need. And there isn't any, this is what it's going to cost. We have no idea, wait a minute, let me finish. What we need is the report to say, this is what it's going to cost. This is what the operational costs are going to be past that. We need to be able to look at that, too. What's the transportation cost going to be if we decide to do this? And this is something, we don't have all of that information. And I believe, and what I've asked for since the day I stepped foot on this board, is a report and for the public to be able to put the input so that I can make an informed decision. Let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's all we're asking for, is for the report to bring us. We don't need another study. We know it needs to be done. But we've done, we have taken five studies over there that have been over the 20 years. So, you know, I understand what you're asking for.
I'm not asking for a study. I'm asking for you to show me the number that we've been throwing out to the public for a middle, for a high school, middle school combination is 120 to 130 million dollars. With nothing down, I want to see how you get the debt service paid with 3.5 million dollars. That's all I want to know. That's all, you don't have to tell them what we're going to build, how it's going to look. I just want those numbers. It won't work.
I believe, and I'll look back, I think it was two months ago or maybe three months ago, I did a presentation at the school board meeting, and I'll look back at that, where I actually took the report from 2010 from a securities consultant firm that presented to this board in 2010 and said, and did all the scenarios. They did the big project, if you did the whole thing, of 105 to 130 million dollars and told you what that would cost. The number I'm throwing out for five cents is based on that report of a consolidated high school costing somewhere around $50 million. And all those numbers are in the report. They're on our website currently. Because I think two months ago, we posted those reports after I went through them. Those same reports were given to the Board of Supervisors. I don't know how many more reports we got to look at. We gave the numbers that said what the debt service was and how much money had to be down for every single one of those scenarios. For 49 million, for 65 million, for 70 million, for 105, we went through that. What we don't know is what it's going to cost. Because we don't know what this community wants in their school. So once we get that, my number could be off. If this community has all these needs, my number, the school may cost us 70 million. Maybe they want two high schools and it's going to cost us 75. So then my number's going to be off. So we don't know until we get that number. So we can confuse them again. We gave those reports. Those reports are there. I don't know why we have to create it again. It's already been done. 2010, presented again two months ago. Given to them at the Education Committee. Given to them. It's online for every public person to see, including anyone on this board. It's there. It's there to look at.
Thank you for your input. I think your judgment is the public input. Just turn it now, it's going to be public, brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments and meetings are just one of the avenues of communication. And the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communicating with the public to represent. The public's invited to sign up to speak prior to the beginning of the evening. The clerk on the school board will write down your name, address, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public's allowed up to six minutes at most, to express their views. Please respect that time limitation and due force. Please understand that it is, may not be possible to randomly respond to questions. As we know, it is inappropriate at public meetings to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, welcome, appreciate your input. Please begin with your comments. Please state your name to the board.
Wanda Bailey.
We have six minutes.
My name is Wanda Bailey. I'd like to respond to a letter that was sent home today to elementary and middle school parents. This letter's purpose is to solicit support for a school board expenditure of $200,000 that has been voted down three times by our Board of Supervisors. Despite joint committees, we have a failure to communicate. And I will make an attempt to translate for you what is going on here. Let's be logical and consider what the BOS has approved. Elementary school additions, new bleachers, repairs of heating systems at high school, middle schools, chiller replacements at South Hill Elementary, roof replacements, elementary school window replacements and heating/cooling units, kitchen upgrades, master clocks, security cameras, fire alarms, and last but not least, a high school complex at 30% down. From that list, I conclude that the Board of Supervisors is willing to support our school system and repair and upgrade the current facilities that we have. Those members of the BOS have concluded that their constituents do not support any architectural study that will analyze what is needed to construct this combined high school complex. So why spend $200,000 to talk them into something they don't want? Who wants to watch or read an advertisement for something they don't want to buy? Get it? Now, back to the letter that was sent home today. Number one, the did you know questions. Yes, I did. I knew all those things. But you forgot to ask people how many of them are living in 60-year-old homes. Just because it's 60 years old doesn't mean it's not useful and doesn't require maintenance and upgrade from time to time. I would love to know how much money has been spent to keep I-85 in the hospital functioning since 1960. If that kind of effort had been devoted to our schools, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Number two, the first step is not to hire an architect. The first step is for you to go to work and find out what your constituents want. This does not require $200,000. It requires nine different public meetings in nine districts in this county with each school board member and supervisor present to hear what people want. That would be free. I will even volunteer to organize them all. Number three, this architectural firm will be anything but unbiased. They are builders of shiny new things. That's like paying a mechanic ahead of time to fix your car or hiring a surgeon to tell you you need surgery. Number four, how does an architectural firm help us determine what programs we need to better serve our students? We are already paying Dr. Thornton and Dr. Hackney and the Department of Education to do that for us. Number five, we just added classroom space at all of our elementary schools. They are wonderful and provided much-needed square footage to meet needs that have existed for the last 15 years. I've seen those new classrooms. They don't look that much different from the classrooms that we have that were built in 1960, except that the furniture's new and the wiring- in nineteen sixty, except that the furniture's new and the wiring might be better. So I don't know how an architectural firm is going to develop programs and design specialized facilities for Mecklenburg County. Shouldn't our schools look like other schools in the state of Virginia? There's probably a dozen or so prototypes that we could choose from that have been built in the last ten years, that we could make minor adjustments to and meet our needs. Number six, you definitely need to listen to our voices, but not to secure funding. You need to listen to what taxpayers are willing to pay for, and your timing is perfect. We all just got our new tax bills due December fifth. The funding of this study might not cost us anything in tax rate, but what this architect tells us to build surely will. Number seven, the community has been vocal about the condition of our schools. Whether this requires new facilities or renovated facilities has never been clear. The blame for this current condition falls in your lap. Your attorney claims this is one board, past, present, future, with revolving members who come and go. So it is clearly your fault that maintenance and upgrades have not occurred in the last sixty years the way they have on I-85 and at our hospital. D C U now wants to build a new hospital. Well, good for corporate medicine. This is not the corporate world and should never be operated that way. So here's the translation. The BOS has agreed to set aside two million dollars per year for a new high school because you asked for it. Let's use that two million dollars to upgrade and enhance the schools that we have. Let's see a five, ten, fifteen-year plan with input from your constituents to spend thirty million dollars over the next fifteen years to fix the list that they asked for at your first few joint committee meetings. There would probably be a little money left over. And then maybe we could address some real problems, like teacher pay scales and adequate instruction that will help our schools to become fully accredited.
Yeah, fifty-five seconds.
I'll be waiting for your phone calls to set up these community reme- these community meetings. Remember, I did volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, minutes of the July, uh, school special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve? It wasn't approved in the last time.
So moved.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Stained.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Any discussion? We're all in favor? Ms. Jones? Oh, yeah? Upstanding. The next one on the agenda is the, um, September meeting. Can I motion approve those minutes? All in favor?
Stained.
Next on the agenda is paying the bills. I checked the bills this month.
I did, and I had several questions, um, as we were going through. Um, there were some, let's see, under instruction. There was two thousand and three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents, and those were for the after-school program, for violins, for lacrosse. Um, and there are a lot of different things that you will see in the bills this month that are coming out of that grant and for the after-school program. They were also, um, they were spread out, and they were also under the federal category, too. Um, then there was something for Brain Pop, and that's subscriptions that, that the schools are using. Um, there was one for two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents that was a reimbursement to Parkview Middle, and that was for planners. And, um, the reason that they, we allocate funds for them to purchase those every year, however, due to the billing cycle, they needed to go ahead and order those and pay for them, and so we just reimbursed them for that. Um, there was another for four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents for Lego education, and that's for robotics that's, um, there. There was something, it was, um, for, for Gum Drop, um, for, I think it was twenty-four hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents. That was for new library books at the Bluestone High School. Um, and then there were two, let's see, under instruction, there were two bills in there. Each were twenty thousand each, and those were for after-school programs for remediation. And again, that goes back to the grants. Is that correct? Then, let's see, there were funds in there for, um, for keyboards for South Hill Elementary. Uh, there was one that was in there, and it was under South Hill Elementary's for keyboards, and there was a, a charge for two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. That's the correct amount for the keyboards. There was a keying error in there for three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents, so you'll see that in there, but then you'll see where it was subtracted out. So the actual cost of that is the, the, um, two thousand nine hundred. Under administration, um, there were, there was the monthly, um, payment to our attorney, but there was also a sixteen hundred and eighty-three dollar amount that was there. Um, and I was reminded that that's for litigation, that his monthly fee doesn't follow, doesn't cover litigation, so whenever we're in litigation, there's an additional cost. Um, so that's what that's for. There was a reimbursement to Dr. Thornton for a hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents, and that was for a conference where he used his personal credit card for the conference, and then, um, we reimbursed him for that. Um, under transportation, there are a lot of, of big-ticket items under there, and, um, there were some big repairs on the buses that we've had to make lately. Under operations and maintenance, there was a nine hundred and fifty-five dollar check to S V C C, and that's for the contracting courses that we sent the individuals to. Then there were some for, um, our, the R and P contracts. There, there was, um, the people that doing the lawn care and maintenance at Parkview High School, outside of their contract, some trees fell down. Um, it was bitted out, and they actually were the ones that got the bid, so that was the cost, the additional cost to them for this month was because they got the bid and they removed the trees. There was eighteen, um, eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars to yard works, and that was for mulch for all the elementary schools that's starting in.
Question. Did we bid that?
Yes, sir.
And yard works out of Chesterfield County, got it?
Yes, sir.
Um, there was a nineteen thousand dol- thirty-four, nineteen thousand thirty-four dollars, um, for, to Clark's, it was Clark's Furniture?
Clark's Furniture.
Furniture, and that was for flooring at Bluestone High School. And also, she was going to check to make sure, because they did a classroom at Clark's Furniture.
Yeah, the, the nineteen thirty-four was for the library at Bluestone High School.
Okay. And then, let's see. There was one for ten thousand dollars for Richmond Alarm Company, and that's the security system that they're finishing up here at the central office. And then under technology, there were a lot of them to this D I S Y S Solutions, and also S H I International, um, and those were network upgrades, and she was going to che- she was going to check those for me.
Um, yes, and I did. Uh, Mr. Gregory, I think you'd be able to probably speak to that a little bit more. It's S H I and, um, SciCom.
S H I is, I remind you, it's all, it's nice, it's a lot of switch upgrades at Parkview Middle, Chase City coming up, and additional access points at all schools, at all schools.
Okay. And, and there were a lot of those on there for that. And then under the federal side, um, the global learning, that's for the after-school programs, too. So, um, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, high tech, half of six thousand dollars. What was that, was that come out of federal?
Um, that was the, uh, training for professional development. Uh, I believe it was done in the summer. It comes, it qualifies, we, we do have professional development money in, in the federal funds, and, and that's what we use that for.
And also, you may have seen where, um, sped used a lot of, they were spending money and, and getting a lot of supplies and things in, and their grant was running out, so they were utilizing that grant. And, and I do want to, um, compliment Ms. Garner on the way that she has everything set up now. If you look, it's a little easier for you to be able to see each school, and also, if you look at the way that she has, um, the, the electric bills, the utilities and things like that, it's for each school, so it's a little bit easier for us to find, um, and to be able to go back and look at. So thank you for doing that.
Any more discussion on paying the bills? All in favor? All opposed? Next thing on the agenda is the personnel. That the school board approved the personnel recommendation. Yes, amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Abstained.
We had discussion, we never made a motion.
Okay.
It's all right.
Let's go back to paying the bills. Have you had discussion, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, again? All opposed, I thought we did, but, okay. Next on the agenda is the student matter, uh, two fourteen, two fifteen oh two. Can I have a motion that the school board approved the student matter, uh, two fourteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen oh two?
So moved.
This is a different one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Abstained.
Uh, the next one, student matters, uh, as date two, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen oh one, that the school board approved the district committee recommendation regarding, and that with a amendment.
We wanted to approve it as the board, as the board recommended.
Yes.
I make, I make a motion that we approve it as the board recommended.
Second.
All in favor? We'll have a discussion first. All in favor? All opposed?
Stained.
Next on the agenda is that the, uh, gift and talent, uh, local plan, that the school board approved the gift and talent, talent, local, local plan. Any discussion? Can you get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And opposed? Next on the agenda is the, uh, H, General School Board Policy, Section C, General School Administration, that the, um, school board approved, the, the, the Virginia School Board Association Policy, Section C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Uh, that the Virginia School Board Policy, Section D, Physical Management, that the school board approved this section. Any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Which one? Okay. Next thing is, all night field trips, that the, uh, school board approved, the overnight field trips presented at September fifteenth meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Traffic light study request to V-DOT, that the school board approved the request to V-DOT to do a traffic light study on the two roads in front of, um, Lacrosse Elementary School for safety reasons.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next thing is that the school board approved the, uh, request for the, uh, pickup truck for, uh, Parkview High School.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, what kind of dollar amount are we looking at?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's all enough.
It's a thirty-five thousand.
It's a, it's a F three fifty. It needed to be that, that big to haul the trailer.
So when did Bluestone ask for a truck?
It's been, I think, before you came.
No, I was trying to that one.
It's been a long time ago. They, they asked, and they had to raise their own money. We turned them down. We turned down both schools.
So you're talking about twenty, um, six or twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So this boy had nothing to do with, uh, turn down.
Right.
So what is the, you have a motion?
Not second.
Not second. And there's more discussion?
Yeah, I just, I want to say one thing, one more thing. I mean, I don't have a problem with, with the, I just, uh, the next time we bid a truck, I'd like to see us bid a truck. You know, let's spec it out, instead of a new or used, two thousand and ten to new. I think that probably confused some of the dealers to the point that, I think we only got one bid. I think, you know, I just feel like if we'd have put a bid out for a new Ford F three fifty diesel period, that we'd have probably had bids from, uh, Petersburg to Florida.
Uh, we were trying to do this locally.
I know.
And, um, also, the guideline from the state of Virginia on the, in the procurement act advises you not to be so specific, um, with models and things like that, because you limit your, your bids. Um, if I specifically ask for a F three fifty, for example, I'm, I'm putting out Chevrolet, uh, G M C, and, and the other dealers that might be out there.
But what bothers me is, uh, if the only bidder had, had a used truck with sixty thousand miles on it, that's what we'd be buying tonight.
Uh, we had, we had the right to turn it down.
I know. Personally, I mean, I'd rather have a new truck. If we're going to buy one, let's buy something that'll stay with us. But, but, you know, I'm just saying.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I will keep that in mind.
I mean.
But are you for the procurement policy?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Also, I believe this board has been criticized before for not buying local, getting the lowest price, but it wasn't even local.
Okay. At this time, we have, uh, a figure on that, so.
But it can be used division-wide, right? If there's a need.
It is a need, yeah.
I mean, I'm just.
Own body school division.
Right, exactly.
Not own body, no.
For one school.
Call the police before you go get it. Or then you'll be going to Parkview and take it.
At this time, we have a board member's remarks. I think we just voted, okay. All in favor of buying a truck? All in favor of buying a truck?
All in favor? Yeah, we had the motion in the second.
Okay.
Yes, we had the motion in the second.
Let's go.
We have a motion in the second. So in favor? All opposed? Okay, one, one opposition. Anything else? If not, we, it's time for board, board remarks. Start over here.
I really don't have anything to add tonight, but, uh, just very glad that everything's good to go, and they just roll.
You go, girl.
Yeah, I did appreciate the, uh, in-depth presentations tonight. They were very good, and, and I'm glad we're keeping our laser focus on the change that is good for our kids. And I also want to keep the laser focus on our facilities. It was twenty years ago. You've had so many studies, that definitely there is something we have to deal with our facilities. We cannot continue to put our head in the sand and ignore the problem. I think one of the, um, one of the studies did say, if, if we want to remodel or renovate, uh, it would be eighty-five percent of building new. Um, we need a stu- if we had this study, they could say, well, what would we do with our kids while we're doing that? While we're gutting and renovating a whole building at eighty-five percent of where a new building would be? If someone, I'm glad someone's passionate- If someone, I'm glad someone's passionate about that, but that's what, that's the kind of information we need to find out. We need to put all the options out there. Some, some of our citizens might be passionate about renovating and want to do that, so the study could even help us with that, one or two. But we've got to do something. We need an impartial third party to hear the voice of the community and come back to both boards, and then with a price tag for everything that we want, then we can start making an educated decision. I've heard so many people say, well, we don't care about the facilities. The state of our facilities affects every citizen in this county. If you're not concerned about the health and academic achievement of our kids that new buildings can, can help with, that's fine. I mean, I understand that. If you're not concerned with economic development, people and businesses move to where there are good schools, and good school buildings make a difference. I guess people and companies both look at a locality's investment in education to find out if they want to move there. But even if those things don't care, you don't care about, maybe you care about your pocketbook. I listen to a lot of talking head finance folks, but everyone's predicting interest rates will be probably going up the end of, the middle of next, next year. I can give you a list if you want. But if your pocketbook, we've got to do something. The longer you, we postpone this and we stick our head in the sand and we don't do anything, it's going to cost this community and taxpayers much more in the long run. We've got to act now to start solving the problem, and this study will do that. My thoughts.
Ms. Brown?
That's it. Well. About three.
I was impressed with the strategic plan to move our academic performance forward. Obviously, a lot of work to do, but I think collaboratively, together, we can make that happen. And I did a Ms. Tanner's remarks. If you want new facilities in our school division, we encourage you to contact your, all of the board of supervisors to get their support.
I would agree with all the three in front of me, and I won't prolong your meeting by repeating what they have said. I heard a lot of good things here tonight, and I was quite impressed with our five-year strategy plan, but I noticed that you used the pronoun "we" so frequently in your presentation. We, define the "we." Who are the "we's"?
Who are the "we"?
Yeah. You know, who we're talking about?
You.
Me.
You.
As a plural. I'm a one. I mean, are we talking about the administration? No. The whole community, everything, everybody.
We're talking about everyone who gave input into that plan.
This woman don't like to find my work.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
I'd like to commend the students of the Ag Science projects at the fair this year. They were very interesting. I enjoyed seeing the students, parents, and administration that was over there. And going back to the new school, I have one comment, and that comment is, if we're going to get a new school, I think we need to change the tone of how we are approaching it.
Turn it off, turn it on. I have about thirty minutes worth, so just sit back and relax.
You got three minutes.
I know, I'm just playing, I'm just joking. I will take Mr. Edwards and Chris's time today.
I'll take mine back.
My thoughts and prayers are with the Parrish and Sally families, Parkview faculty, staff, coaches, dragon teammates, students, and Jomahn's friends during the sad and difficult time. I do want to express my sympathy to all of them and our support to all of you. After looking at the plan and the presentations, I think it's a shame that we are so, you know, whatever the motivations are, that we're not providing 21st century learning environments for our students. And I had the opportunity to travel to other areas and see some of the learning environments that students in counties that aren't as well-off as we are have. And it's pitiful because they have nice science labs, they have the new 21st century places for collaboration, and we still have trailers. And I think that's a shame, no matter how you put it. I think we could all take lessons from our Students of the Month. If you listened to what those two young ladies want to see for our future, I think we need to stop and listen and look and do what's right for our students. They're doing it, they're the examples, and it should be us the examples, not them. Both of the videos that the two of you did were awesome. I'm glad, I'm not the one that has to judge them because I don't know which one I would pick, so I'm just going to call it a draw. And I want to encourage everyone to look at, if you haven't liked the Facebook pages of the schools, and the Facebook page for Mecklenburg County, that you like those pages, that you follow those pages, and you look at those pages because we are doing some awesome, awesome things in this county. Our students are learning, they're learning a different way, they look happy, the teachers are happy, and I think that everybody needs to look at that. And I want to commend all of you for what you're doing and keep up the good work.
Okay. I'm going to pass tonight, and I want to say that I think our administrative staff and our teachers have done a wonderful job, and we have to support them and also our students. And at this time, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?